Hello, everyone. Thanks for joining us tonight at the Select Board meeting on Tuesday, November 7th, at 7:30 PM. We call the meeting to order, motion to open the meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. Roll call, Mr. Gito. Mr. McCrisky?
Yes.
Vice Chair Cavie?
Here.
Mr. Carrara?
Here.
And I'm here as well. I ask that everyone stand to salute our flag if you are able.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
In accordance with Chapter 2 of the Acts of 2023, which extends the governor's March 12th, 2020, order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law GLC 30A, Section 20, until March 31st, 2025, this meeting will be conducted both in person and virtually via Google meets. The meeting will be recorded by SMAC cable television and broadcast live and may be livestreamed at www.stotontv.org. A recording of the meeting transcript or other comprehensive record of the proceeding will be posted on the town's website and/or SMAC as soon as possible after the meeting if live broadcast or live streaming is unsuccessful. Times are approximate and items may be taken out of order at the chair's discretion. For starters, first agenda item, Select Board comment. Are there any comments?
Madam Chair.
Yes. Vice Chair Cavie.
Just a very quick comment. Town meeting was last night. We still have a couple of articles to review at town meeting, so we'll be meeting again. A town meeting will be meeting again tomorrow, Wednesday. I assume, given the fact that we only have, I think, three or four articles left, it will probably be completed then. I just didn't want a lot of time to elapse before I just thanked the town meeting representatives for their hard work, for the various boards and committees that reviewed the articles, including the Finance Committee, the Media and Operations, and there's a number, but I think that there's Mini-Ops, Mini-Regs. I don't think anybody else, any of the other committees had to be intergovernmental, as well. Thank you very much, as well as the Rules Committee. And I just wanted to thank all of the members of the town that volunteered to help make these decisions on behalf of the rest of the citizens of the town. It's not the hardest work in the world, but also they do have to stay up quite late when they're doing this work. And additionally, they put a lot of attention into trying to get things right, and the value they bring is always impressive. So I just wanted to thank all the town meeting reps, volunteers, town employees who have been involved in various articles as well, and just as well as town council for helping guide us, and the town moderator and deputy moderator for leading us through it all. Especially the town meeting will probably be done tomorrow, as I mentioned, but I don't think we meet again for four or two weeks. If that's the case, I just didn't want too much time to pass. Thank you very much. I appreciate the opportunity.
Thank you, Vice Chair Cavie. Are there any other comments? Mr. Gito? Yes.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to talk about the police station. It's clear we need to upgrade our police station. Traditionally, we would only talk about one building at a time that needed to be built. That's just how Stoughton has basically operated for many years. In our current situation, the elementary school to replace a cell school is next on the list, but we need to change our tradition, I believe. We agree, I think we all agree, that we have information to show that the police station needs to be upgraded. We now need to show what the upgraded police station at 26 Row Street will look like and what it will cost. And we must communicate this well and proceed to take action based on that strategy. We owe it to our police officers to have a proper work environment. Just because the fire station was singled out as the first need doesn't mean that the police station is adequate. So I propose that we do two things, that we prepare an article for the 2024 annual town meeting to design a police station to be remodeled and enlarged on the property owned by the town of Stoughton at 26 Row Street, and explore, if desired, the purchase of part or all of the property at 49 Row Street that consists of about 1.6 acres if more land is needed for purposes for future use for town government. And second, that we determine if we can begin to plan the planning process right away. We should determine if there are any unexpended funds remaining in the accounts for planning for the public safety building, determine if those funds can be used to begin planning for the police station work, and if so, communicate with the Finance Committee to see if we could get a transfer of funds from the Finance Committee reserve to begin to do the planning this fiscal year. I guess as an aside, it's important to note that some other buildings that, like some other buildings constructed in the past, the police station planning and execution wasn't as good as we would have liked. There have been many repairs needed, there are others that are still needed, and in fact, the roof still leaks, even though it was just supposedly fixed. So that's my recommendation. It's not a motion or anything else. I'm sure that we could just proceed to do that.
Thank you very much, Mr. Gito. Are there any other comments? Oh, yes, Mr. McCrisky.
Very quick, I don't know if Mr. Gito had a microphone stashed in my notebook for what my entire day today was consisting of, and I'm going to be very happy to work with you on this. I think that I met with people for several hours today on that very subject, and I think that we would be less than of our word if we didn't do exactly what you just said. There is a way to get that done, and I don't think that we'll have any problem being ready for an article at the annual town meeting that spells out exactly what we need, right down to the nuts and bolts. We have plenty of data. If it's one thing that the previous building committee did, that the proposed price of $65 million did, was showed exactly the build-out that the Police Department needs, we know that we can build it for basically substantial, in excess of $20 million savings, if we were going at an affordable and looking to just get the job done. But there's, and your point is, we can do other things if it means getting the other land, but I think we could still do a substantial build-out that'll meet the Police Department's needs for exceeding for the next 50 years. It's still an overall savings of the building for the needs versus building a megaplex on land that we didn't have. So with all that's done, we could be looking at that $65 million, which probably would have been $70 million by the time we get done. Who knows? But that was a very conservative number at that time, so that we would be able to say that we got both of those buildings done for about a $23 million savings to the taxpayers over doing the big building. So, thank you, Mr. Gito, for those comments. I look forward to working with you on it, and I believe that this board unanimously, in different times, has made the same sentiments as that the Police Department needs to be a priority. So, thank you very much.
Yeah, I'm sure that we all want to participate in that. It's not just one or two of us doing it.
No, that's what's it. I believe it's.
Right, and it will require professional assistance as well.
Without a doubt.
Any other comments in this regard? Okay, moving right along. I did have three comments, and it's on a different topic. At our most recent Select Board meeting, we had the President of the 300th Committee join us, and they asked us if there was an account set up to accept donations, so we said that at that time that we would get back to them. I did a little research, and so in the absence of Mr. Coulter, I'll speak on this. We need to set up an account that accepts donations. Currently, they do have an account for the funds that town meeting approved, but we need an account specifically to accept donations. So please expect that to be on our agenda at our next Select Board meeting, maybe a consent agenda item. So I'll be working with town, Mr. Coulter, Mark Tisdale, and Mayor Jane on that. The other items, we have two events that are coming up in January related to Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King. The first one is going to be an indigenous and African-American history tour held on, it's going to be a two-part, held on January 11th and January 13th. The second is a more traditional MLK event. It's a day of service, and that will be at the Stoughton Public Library on Monday, January 15th. And I'm personally inviting all the Select Board members and everyone present and everyone in the audience and all of the Stoughton residents to that, but you'll hear more about that as we get closer, as we approach January. Thank you very much. Moving right along to our next item, which is item number three, consent agenda items. A is approval of open session minutes meeting of October 17th, 2023. B, water connection application, John Stagnone, Homestreet parcel ID 068-113. Next is C, water connection application, Esther Davis at 39 Robinette Road. And D is water connection application, GS Redlon &amp; Sons Incorporated at 92 Evans Drive. Are there any items on the consent agenda that you would like to pull and discuss in more detail?
I'd like to discuss item A. I don't think we need to pull it. It's just a section on page four that we had a discussion about the fiscal '25 budget guidelines, and there were a number of comments made to the original that Mr. Cavie put together, which was, he put together something that was good, I thought, but there were other comments that were made, and Mr. Coulter was going to get back and get that other information to us, the changes to us. I don't think that I've seen them, and I'm wondering if Mr. Cavie would like to take the information that was on page four and integrate that into the work that he put into it to save Mr. Coulter a little bit of time. You probably can do it in a heartbeat, but maybe you can't. If you can't, then...
I don't know. I don't know.
Do you want me to pass this down to you?
Yeah.
There you go. Joe?
Yeah.
Well, that didn't work, did it? Sorry, Gilda, I should have done that.
But other, everything's all set? All right. Anything else? Okay. Okay, a motion to accept, oh, I'm sorry.
I thought you were going to go around.
Any other items that someone wants to pull or discuss in more detail?
Madam Chairman, I'd like to discuss B and C.
Yes, please proceed.
It's just a minor overlook. We're always talking about, let's have completed applications. I don't know if these start at Public Works or if they're done at the water place on Central Street, but two of them don't have the size water service checked off that they're supposed to have. On the, one for John Stagnone, since it's a new construction, all new construction is to have one-inch water services. That's regulation, but it's not checked off here. There are a couple other issues with it that I was told, but I'm not going to air them now. They'll get straightened out, because Mr. McCrisky wanted to pull it. The other one...
We can pull it. I didn't have my microphone.
Yeah.
We can pull it and hold it until we...
Right.
Okay. So that is...
Mr. Tisdale knows what it needs.
Okay.
Which ones have to be pulled?
Stagnoney, Esther Davis, I think it's an oversight because her well is bad, and I'm sure nobody told her what size that had to be given, so that's, I can tell you that's what happened.
So the other two, which one?
Believe it or not, the gentleman that comes from out of town is fine, Mr. Redlon. Everything is fine. So I think, I think just B is the problem.
Okay. That'll be my motion to pull that and hold it until corrections are made.
Okay.
I just wanted to help Ms. Esther with hers. I know that's what happened.
Esther Davis.
They're filling it out, and it's an oversight.
All right, so, Madam Chair.
Wait just a minute. Mr. Stagnone is online? Is that what you were telling me, Gilda? Maybe Mr. Stagnoney, did you want to make a comment?
Yeah, if, thank you, Madam Chair. I was wondering what is the problem with the application? Nobody, you know, is pulling it, but nobody's saying why.
Okay. You may not have heard, because there's something wrong with our microphones, it seems, but Mr. Carrara, on John Stagnone's application, you're referring to the measurement?
On new construction, they submit for the water connection when they have a final set of plans. So the final set of plans will show the exact location for the water in Sua, the distances, the sizes. This don't get it done. We get them when we get the new construction. You saw one not too long ago that was pretty intense. It was all marked up. This doesn't even have the water service size, and it's a simple thing. New construction is one inch. I just, if we want to pass it...
So, Madam Chair?
Yes, Mr. Stagnone.
Okay, so I guess this is a new policy, is to have, you know, a diagram. It's not included on the application. It says one was required, so, but the application doesn't have a spot to say that it's one inch. I know it's one inch, and I didn't, you know, I, again, talking to, you know, the town engineer and stuff, this is all going to change. The lot isn't engineered yet, so, you know, alls I'm doing is saying the house is going to be in line with the other houses as far as the setback goes. The line is approximately going to go here because that's roughly an estimate of where the utility room's going to be. So, right now, we're just approving the number of gallons, in my opinion. I'm not even sure why, you know, a plan is really needed to, it's going to move, could move left or right, you know, after this is approved, and I just don't see the bearing on why it's even needed at this point.
Mr. Tisdale?
That's on the section, it's on the lower third of page one of the application. It says service size requested, and that's blank. Please weigh in.
Yeah, so the bottom, I think, honestly, looking at this application, and I know you have a new policy of a plan and all that kind of thing, which is great. I think a plan is fantastic, but I do think we need to tighten up like a checklist on this, on exactly what's required on the plan, what we label, that kind of thing. On this checklist here, on this application, at the bottom, it says commercial and industrial and bold, and then it says service size requested. So that makes you, it leads you to believe that the service size is only for commercial and industrial. On the top part, where it says residential, there's nothing that says service size, although it is required. It's a one-inch service, like Mr. Carrara said, he's right on point. So I would, I mean, I would recommend that we may want to take a look at this application, get a better checklist, have our water superintendent generate a checklist, so there's no confusion in the future of what the plan should have on it. That's my recommendation.
Thank you, Mr. Tisdale. Mr. Carrara?
We had another water application that came from Wells Construction out of Randolph, and we had the finished plan showing that everything. I don't think we should be giving water out without knowing if it's going on the lot right, or if these gentlemen here got to spend time re-engineering a plan that should be engineered by the people who are doing the work. It's okay for them to do the checklist and read up on it. It's pretty simple to look at this. You circle the word residential, and then you go over and you know that it's going to be a one-inch service. It's not going to be two and a half. It's not going to be six inch. It's pretty simple. That's what it is, if you know what you're doing. But we said we wanted completed applications. Am I being picky? No.
I think you are.
Well, then that's fine, Lou.
I mean, in all candor, when I look at this...
If you want to constantly complain that things aren't doing proper, and then you want to just go and say, "I think you're being picky," then make a motion to approve it, and I'll vote against it. That's fine. I have no problem, Lou.
I will do that.
Every time that we do something here to straight something out, you take us back 10 feet.
That's my motion. And there's nothing, there's going to be, at the end of the day, an as-built plan that's going to show the location and the size of that water connection. We know that it's a new construction, that it's a residential construction, and we know that a residential construction has to have a one-inch main. They're not going to be putting in a half-inch main or anything else, because they know that they're going to have to put in a one-inch main, or when the inspection is done, that will have to come out, and a new one-inch main would have to be put in there.
This is what we're trying to avoid, Lou.
It makes no difference what you're saying, there's nothing in this application that says for residential you have to do that.
No, but when you bring a full plan in to start maneuvering on the lot, in a lot as tight as this between two other houses, you got to make sure you're sourcing water on the right place, and you don't put them maybe where the electric trench is going to go.
Let me remind the board that when we started this process of looking at water connections, the purpose was that we had restrictions on water, and the purpose of coming before the board was to find out whether or not there was sufficient water available to be able to service that particular residence or business. It wasn't to find out whether or not there was three-quarters of an inch, or an inch and a half, or two, whatever. I mean, for commercial property, it was particularly important that we know the size of the connection, because we had to make sure that we would be able to service that industrial or commercial business. We have not only sufficient water, but we have an excess of water at the present time, and have talked from time to time about selling some water to other communities. We don't have a problem with being able to provide water for this residential construction. All we're doing is slowing up the opportunity for that person to continue to build a project and causing extra time and extra money. There's nothing else that is germane on that. That's the reason for my motion. I apparently have not yet got a second, and maybe not yet a second.
That's what I was going to mention. It was a little second.
Yeah, I just didn't want to interrupt you, but I'll second it. I do agree with Mr. Carrara's concerns. I think these could be remedied, though, even after we've moved forward on the acceptance of it. So I do second that motion.
I didn't hear it.
He said he seconded your motion.
Thank you.
Okay, so a motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion on this motion? Only on this item, B, the motion was made and seconded, on the vote. Mr. Gito?
Yes.
Mr. McCrisky?
No.
Mr., I mean, Vice Chair Cavie?
Yes.
Mr. Carrara?
No.
And I vote no. On the other items, were any of the other items pulled? I don't believe they were. Okay. So for items...
Sorry, was it B and C? C, you just...
I gave an explanation for C. I knew what was happening there.
Thank you.
Okay, so for 3A, that's approval of open session meeting minutes, C, water connection application, Esther Davis, and D, water connection application, GS Redlon &amp; Sons.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Mr. McCrisky.
Motion for approval is submitted.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. Thank you. You were approved. Thank you. Congratulations. I just wanted you to know. Okay, moving, oh, okay, what time is it?
7:59.
7:59. We can move into our public hearings, and the process will be, first, the public hearing will be read, and then a motion to open the public hearing will be made. We will go through the compliance checklist. We will hear from the owner or the representative on the item. The board will ask questions to that owner or representative. Then we'll ask the citizens to weigh in if they had comments. Then the board will ask more questions if they have any other questions. Then the owners will give final comments if they would like. Then we will close the public hearing, and the Select Board will deliberate. So that will be our process for all items A, B, all the way through J. So with that said... So, with that said, I just wanted, Mrs., Mrs. Davis, right? If you wanted to leave, you're all set. I didn't want you to have to sit around if, if you didn't want, if you wanted to leave.
I wish I could leave.
Come right up here to the mic, and just press it, it'll turn green.
I just want to thank this board for considering the problem. Considering the problem that I have, because it's not easy having water drip from your faucet, and you're bearing it for years, and, and you're spending money trying to find out the solutions. But anyways, I just want to thank the committee for taking me out of this hardship.
What are the next steps?
What are the next steps? It's about one of my daughters, I have four.
What does she have to do next?
What do I have to do next?
Mr. Tisdale? Guy's going to take care of you.
Your neck...
This is our assistant town manager, Mark Tisdale.
Hi, nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you as well.
So what you would want to do is hire a licensed contractor to install your water service and connection properly. We have a list of licensed contractors, if you'd like, and the board's okay with it, the chair's okay with it, I can give you a list.
Absolutely.
Yep.
We'll take it.
Okay, I'll walk you downstairs and, and show you where that is.
Like the best ones, if you want it.
Yeah, no problem. If you, if you take the elevator to, to level two, I'll meet you on level two.
Thank you.
Okay?
Will do. Thank you so much.
Is that okay?
Yes. Perfect.
That's great. Thank you.
Our pleasure.
Thank you so much. Have a good evening.
Good luck.
Thank you. Moving right along to our first, that is for A. Vice Chair Cave, you want to read the, the hearing into the record, please?
Sure.
Yeah, I do.
We got to talk about how these things are put together.
One moment.
The document you need is all the way at the back.
Apologies, I think I just, I just scanned right past it. Just give me one second.
Thank you.
I've got it, I've got it. It's right here. M and D, right? Nope, I've got it, I've got it. Thank you, man.
So last name?
Last to be said, so please. Okay. So Town of Stoughton, notice of hearing. A public hearing will be held by the select board on November seventh, 2023, at seven fifty-five PM to consider the application of M and D Core Incorporated for a Class III license located at 295 Canton Street, Stoughton, Massachusetts, 02072. The hearing will be conducted at the Great Hall, third floor, Town Hall, 10 Pearl Street, Stoughton, Massachusetts, and via Google Meets, and may be broadcast via Stoughton Media Access Television and Livestream. Google Meets video link and telephone connection for public comment available by calling the select board office at 713411300, extension 9212, or email to gparra@stonem.gov by 4:00 P.M. the day of the hearing, per order of Deborah C. Roberts, Chair, Select Board acting as the local licensing authority.
Thank you. Motion to open the public hearing?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. Vice Chair Cave, you have the checklist, and I asked, are the, I think it's Jonathan Spiegel, oh, if you would like to come forward and position yourself so when we, when we start the process.
Thank you very much. So, we received all the documentation required for a Class III license. This application has been reviewed by the fire department, there's no objections, police have no objections. The Board of Health mentions that the property has a cesspool, and recently had a Title V inspection that conditionally passed. The property will need to be, to upgrade their system within two years. There are no Board of Health objections to the license at this time, provided there's no expansion of use. Building and zoning had no issues, Treasury Office had no issues, and the Water Department had no issues. So, welcome, thank you very much. Are you Jonathan?
Yes.
Jonathan, last name is, is Spiegel?
Yep.
Pleasure to meet you. Could you just tell us a little bit about your interest? Actually, let's start, did we make a motion to open the public hearing?
Yes, we did make that motion.
I don't know, apparently I...
We're on the checklist, now we're on, we'll hear from the, the owner or representative about this property.
Perfect, okay. Yeah, so tell us, tell us about the, what you're looking to do.
So, I think we previously had a license under my father in 2008. He unfortunately passed away in 2020, and so I'm just looking to run the same business that was a DBA under my father.
Does the board? Yeah.
Could I recommend to you, there, there's a little button right in the middle of that?
Oh, you were on, John. You were on?
A little closer.
There you go. There you go.
Okay. I'm colorblind, so I couldn't tell what color it was, but I couldn't hear you very well.
So, I think in 2008, we had a Class III license under my father, David Spiegel, and he passed away the end of 2020, and it's taken me this long to go through the process and get titles for properties, and learn a lot of information, and now finally apply for the license, just so I can continue to run the business.
Does the board have any questions for Mr. Spiegel? Oh, yes, Mr. McCrisky.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Your dad was a good guy.
He really was. Thank you.
I'm so, so sorry if he's lost, you know.
Thank you.
That guy can make you laugh.
Oh, yeah, that's for sure.
Usually at other people's expense, which is even better. The way the property looks now, it's the way the property's always going to look.
Yes.
All right, no additional outdoor storage, no bins outside, all right? The way we see it now, the way your dad ran it, there was no outdoor storage, everything was contained.
Correct.
All right, so we have your commitment here, on record, no additional outdoor storage, no new bins, no more, no roll-offs.
No.
Like that, okay?
No.
So, okay, that's all my question, thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Go ahead, welcome. Yes, Mr. Carrera.
Jonathan, I, your father was a good guy, and your, and your grandfather was even better.
Thank you.
He was tough as nails, that guy.
Oh, yeah.
No, my, my dad had a lot to do with, with your family when they were down the other side of town, and I'm proud to see that you took it over. Every, every father usually likes to see his son take over a business, and I, I got to commend you. The place looks good, you put those decorative stone out there to stop the trucks from turning.
Yep.
I think you did a great job, so...
Thank you.
Good luck to you.
Thank you.
And I have no questions. Vice Chair Cave?
Yeah, I have no questions as well.
Did you want to say some additional words?
Yeah, one, one question, Jonathan, the property to the right, when your gate's closed, is that your property as well, the home? The vacant home?
Eventually.
Eventually, okay.
So...
Is it in your control?
Yes.
Okay, because I've noticed that there are some, there was a landscape truck in there, they're driving in the driveway to the home, drove them behind the home?
Yeah, they come in and they cut the grass for the three properties.
Okay, I, I just, I'd noticed, it seemed like I'd noticed something else driving that way, and I don't know what it was at the time, but, so that's you, I just wanted to make sure that was your property.
Yes.
Yeah, okay, all right, thank you.
Okay.
So, motion to close the public hearing?
Oh, citizens?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Okay, okay. So the board has asked all the questions, now citizens have an opportunity to ask questions. So are there any citizens' comments or requests?
Motion to close.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I vote aye as well.
Motion to approve, Madam Chairman.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Good luck.
Thank you, everyone.
The next item is B, or is it, it's after eight, okay. Class II license application, Stoughton Auto Sales LLC, Seven Cabot Place, Suite Five. Vice Chair Cave, would you like to read the public hearing into the record, please?
Yes, ma'am. Town of Stoughton, notice of public hearing. A public hearing will be held by the select board on November seventh, 2023, at 8:00 P.M. to consider the application of Stoughton Auto Sales LLC for a Class II license located at Seven Cabot Place, Suite Five, Stoughton, Massachusetts, 02072. The hearing will be conducted at the Great Hall, third floor, Town Hall, 10 Pearl Street, Stoughton, Massachusetts, and via Google Meets, and may be broadcast via Stoughton Media Access Television and Livestream. Google Meets video link and telephone connection for public comment available by calling the select board office at 7813411300, extension 9212, or email to gparra@stonem.gov by 4:00 P.M. the day of the meeting, per order of Deborah C. Roberts, Select Board acting as the local licensing authority.
Motion to open the public hearing?
So made. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. Is Mr. Frank, I believe it's Morgan, yes, please step forward. Vice Chair Cave, checklist, please.
Thank you very much. So the, the Class II application paperwork that I have shows that all the steps have been completed, though there was one open checkbox, it's the amount, there's a check for the amount of $100 may payable to the Town of Stone. Has that already been...
Yes.
Provided, okay. So, this has been reviewed by town departments. The fire department has a conditional approval, they ask that no cars be parked and/or stored, ah, sorry, and/or sold at this address, phone and mail use only. Police, no objections. They contacted the applicant about the parking, and they believe you have a solid plan. Board of Health, Board of Health has no concerns, but agrees with the building department, there should be no vehicle stor, storage on site. The building, the end zoning says they have no objections, phone and mail use only, no vehicles stored on property. Treasurer's Office, no objections, Water Department, also no objections. So, so at the, the core of this is whether or not there's going to be any, any cars stored on the site.
No, everything's sold through the auction.
Perfect, okay. In that case, does anybody have any other questions?
From the owner, did you have any comments? Did you want to share some additional information?
No, it's just, everything be sold through the auction, case by case. Like, somebody's looking for a car, they just call me, I show them what they have, and I can do it right from the auction and ship it right to the house.
Thank you.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Mr. McCrisky.
Not a question, Madam Chair, but a comment. This similar process has been approved by our board, dating back fifteen years, anyway. And, you know, where the application states there won't be any cars parked on the property, that is the, that has been the same with, same with previous applications, Park Street, Washington Street, William Kelly Road, you know, somebody worked out of their cellar. So this application is consistent with others.
Any other questions or comments from the select board? Yes, Mr. Gito.
I was confused as to what were the, on your plan, you have shaded a number of, of parking spaces, and there says retail vehicles. What does that mean?
Well, there was, they thought I was going to put cars there, so I had to draw up a map, but I wasn't, so we withdrew that from the application.
Okay, it's in, it's in my, my version, okay. I understand now. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
With no other board member comments and questions, moving to citizens' questions or comments. Are there any citizens' comments? Please come forward, state your name, and if you're a Stoughton resident, or just what your question is, yes. Yes, please.
My name is Jim Berish, along with Howard Meiselman in the back. We are officers of Seven Cabot Place Condo Association. So this became, this was very new to us, other than the announcement we got. I understand that, uh...
Mike? Frank? Yes.
Frank is a tenant of an owner of one of the condos. For the most part, the occupants of the condo are also the owners of the condo, so I'm sure there might have been some lost communication between the owner and Frank and ourselves. Of course, we were very glad to hear that there would be no parking of vehicles whatsoever, and I just want to make sure that that's, you know, zero, not, oh, I just need one car for the weekend, or I need one car for overnight, or parking is tight, there's a lot of people, we got a plow, that's not, you know, the place for that business to happen. In addition to that, the zoning for Seven Cabot Place and all the buildings at Cabot Place falls under neighborhood business, and in accordance with neighborhood business, auto sales is not allowed. So that's something that this board, as well as your zoning board of appeals, would probably have to take into account with regards to this use.
Madam Chair?
And I have the chart here, if you want the copy.
Thank you very much. Just one second, please. Mr. McCrisky.
Yes, Mr. Berish, just so you're aware, the restriction will be put in the license that says no parking. We're very aware of the zoning, and when Mr. Morgan asked me earlier that he was going to be renting a space, what would be it, I said, "Well, you can't have cars there." So the, the restriction will be right on the license. He's operating an office there to keep his paperwork there, he'll make phone calls, with, this has been done before, with the same restriction, because we've had some, one was in a residential neighborhood. It was on a residential street, William Kelly Road, years ago, and the homeowner worked in his cellar, never did a vehicle come on the property. So they make the, you know, they buy on the internet, or on phone bids, or whatever, they purchase it, and they have people that want particular cars. So that restriction, because of the zoning violation, we make it very clear in the license that if any cars are stored on it, that they will be called back in, and we have the authority to pull the license, okay?
So the customer does not pick up their vehicle?
No, they don't.
Nope.
The only thing that's done there is the office work, like an insurance agent would be.
I'm not bringing nobody there.
And they might come pick up paperwork to go pick a car up somewhere, but there was not a car allowed, they're not allowed for sale, they're not allowed for advertising on the site, and, and the people that work at Town Hall, they know when they see a car, they know the background. If there's a car that's having a picture taken of it, trust me, they've made visits in the past, they'll make another visit. And I'll go and I'll say to you that I can vouch for Mr. Morgan and his reputation, you know, he is an impeccable person, I've never known him to be a liar, mislead anybody, and I think that he knows he'd be getting a phone call from me before anybody. So you have a, a good tenant there that keeps his word.
Very good.
Having to be through my house, basically.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. McCrisky?
I just want to see if any of the other butters needed to add anything in additional to what...
Wait just one second, another select board member would like to make a comment, that is Mr. Carrera.
Yeah, I, I inquired, and it's almost like that Carvana thing. You look at the book, he gets the car, gets shipped to your house, they have to get the plates and all that, because that's what I, I asked and inquired through Frank, and he says, "No, no, if he buys it, it goes flatbed to their house, and that's how, nothing's going to hit your place." Because I had concerns too, like you, but Joe, Joe told me it had been done before a couple of times. Thank you.
And I'm only buying cars if people want them, and I just ship right from the auction to the... And I'm only buying cars if people want them, and I just ship right from the auction to the house.
And then back, you said you wanted to see if any of the other tenants had some comments?
Any of the other abutters, neighbors, had any questions?
Thank you so very much for making your comment.
You're welcome.
Okay. Are there any other abutters that would like to make comments? Thank you, hi, welcome, thank you.
Is, I'm just curious, is there a lot of retail traffic coming in and out? Basically, it's just to have the office, I'll never be there. Just to pick the mail up and leave, that's it. It's just to have the license. We weren't sure when we saw it come over there. Everything's done online, I can do everything online, and I can have it shipped right from the auction to the person's house. Only case by case, somebody needs a car, they call them, hey, this is what we got, what do you want? Bang, boom, right from there to there, it's pretty simple transaction. That's pretty much how we, our office function, throughout the whole, throughout the whole building. I don't have time to be there. Yeah, there's too many things.
Wonderful. Was there another, oh, Mr. McCrisky?
Nice to meet you, Mr. Meiselman.
Nice to see you too.
We've spoken.
On the phone?
Yes. Pleasure to meet you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay, good luck.
Yes, sir. Please come forward if you are able, if you wanted to make a comment. Are you one of the abutters as well? Can you please come forward? Oh, he's, we'll just, we can't regard you if you're in the back.
Where, where are the currently operating out of? Are they in Stoughton?
He's asking you if you're currently operating out of Stoughton.
Right now, and wants to approve it, yes, otherwise, no.
So you're not in Stoughton?
Me? Myself, no, I, I moved out of Stoughton recently and went to Westmore.
So you do not have a car sales operation in the Town of Stoughton right now? Where were you before?
This is my first time.
Are there any other citizens' comments? Okay. Do the board have any other comments or questions? Okay, yeah. Well, we have to close the, the public hearing.
Motion to close the public hearing, Madam Chair?
All in favor to close?
Aye.
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 Madam Chair?
Yes, Mr. McCrisky.
Motion to approve the application as submitted.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next items C through J are the National Grid items. Is there a National Grid representative here or online?
Yes, ma'am.
Is it doable to show your face so we can see, turn on your camera?
Calling in, so.
I'm sorry, what?
It's calling in.
It's calling in. Okay. That would be Vice Chair Cavie. This person, we don't have a name. Can you repeat your name, please? Go ahead, Vice Chair Cavie.
Yeah, the representative from National Grid, could you tell us your name?
Yes, my name is Rumma Himmatt, R-U-M-M-A-H, and Himmatt, H-I-M-M-A-T.
Thank you.
Can you repeat that, please? We didn't hear. Slowly, please.
My surname is Rumma, R-U-M-M-A-H, and last name is Himmatt, H-I-M-M-A-T. T, I don't know.
I apologize for this, my hearing is, is very bad, and I, and I'm just trying to make sure I, I, first of all, can get your name correct, more than, most importantly, but also of some importance, I just wanna be able to confirm that you're actually a representative from National Grid, before we, we continue on. Is there a way for you to access this call through, through a video?
Yeah, I've been, I've been trying that for the past a few minutes, it's not letting me. I can't get access for some reason, but I can try it again.
If you don't mind, please, please try to join through the video.
Should we take a two-minute recess until this is done? Okay, we'll take a five-minute recess, please. And then, when everything is set up, we'll reconvene.
Thank you.
Okay, I call the Select Board meeting back to order, and that's on the National Grid items, C through J. Vice Chair Cavie. So where we left off, we opened the public hearing. We were being introduced to the National Grid representative, and we didn't go through the checklist, so. So did you wanna do those one at a time? I think that might be helpful. Okay. So it just seems like... Correct.
I'm sorry, let me turn this thing on. Town of Stoughton noticed a public hearing. A public hearing will be held by the Select Board on Tuesday, November 7th, 2023, at 8:15 p.m. To consider the joint petition of National Grid and Verizon New England Incorporated, who are requesting permission to locate poles, wires, and fixtures, including the necessary sustaining and protecting fixtures as said companies may deem necessary, along and across the following public way. Install one JO pole and locate two, two JO pole, um, poles on Washington Street, beginning at a point approximately 51 feet north of the central line of the intersection of Washington Street and Lincoln Street, and continuing approximately 147 feet in a southerly direction. Relocate pole 51, Washington Street, four feet back and seven feet toward pole 52. Relocate pole 52, Washington Street, four feet back and, and two feet toward pole 51. Install pole 52-50, Washington Street, 56 feet from pole 52 and 72 feet from pole 53. Project number 30304540. The hearing will be conducted in the Great Hall, third floor, Town Hall, 10 Pearl Street, Stoughton, Massachusetts, and/or virtually, and via Google meets. It may be broadcast via Stoughton Media Access Television and Livestream. Google meets video link and telephone connection for public comment available by calling the Select Board Office at 781-341-1300, extension 9212, or email to G. Carrera at stoughton-ma.gov, per order of Deborah C. Roberts, Stoughton Select Board. The plans have been reviewed by numerous town departments. DPW had no comments, they, they approve it. Engineering approved, mentioned that it's consistent with Mast dot Route 138 corridor project. Fire, fire department approved it as well, request, they are requesting a timeline for the removal of old poles. Police approved it, and they commented that a police detail will be needed for traffic. That is, those are all the comments we have. So I'm going to try to, to very briefly get online myself, so I'm able to see the applicant. Give me one second. Okay, so I, I did this mostly because, as I mentioned, my hearing is, is not that great. Mr. Himmatt, is that, am I pronouncing that correct? Oh, you're on mute.
Yes, sir, sorry.
Thank you very much for, for joining us today.
Absolutely.
So can you, please help us, or please, please describe the project, what you're looking to do, and then we'll move forward with the remainder of the public hearing.
The project came from DOT, where they're gonna be replacing and relocating, I think, a number of poles and anchors along Washington Street, Central Street, and I think, yeah, so it's mostly Washington Street, and I believe they're trying to widen up the street, so they ask us to move most of the poles a few feet back.
Does anybody have any questions?
Well, one of the comments, this was from the fire department. They asked for a timeline for the, the old poles to be removed.
Nationally, we don't remove any poles, so we only respond to installing the poles, so that would be Verizon.
Verizon would be removing the poles.
Yes.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Mr. McCrisky.
Just very quick question, and whoever can answer it, I'll go through to Town Manager. Mark, we've had a problem with Verizon on responses to polls. So I think we need to know who that person is, how we engage with that person. I, I would, I would have liked to have seen a Verizon representative on this meeting, and, but I, I'm not inclined to hold up National Grid, who has, you know, consistently serviced the town and been available to us through emergencies and, you know, on regular updates on maintenance and issues. So I'm not inclined to, but I think this needs to be, the question needs to be answered, is who, who is our representative to Verizon that we call for answers like this? I, I personally dealt with an issue on a telephone poll that was about two years in the making, before our own DPW had to solve the problem. And that is unacceptable, and I repeat, unacceptable, conduct to have from a, a public utility that serves a municipal agency such as the Select Board in our role as street commissioners and telephone poles. So again, you know, I, I need to back up, is that, and I do commend National Grid for the work that they've done, both in emergencies and following up with our department heads whenever there's a question. So, so the gentleman, I hope, that's joining us here from National Grid, if you would take back to your superiors my comments, and, and to let them know that we're not questioning them on this, but I do have that question that I think we need to find out. I mean, if we have a, a, a public hearing, and Verizon must have been notified to be at this public hearing. If they weren't, why not? And if they were, why weren't they here? So that is, I guess, my two cents, and I don't have a problem voting for this, but if we could find that out.
Thank you, Mr. McCrisky. Mr. Tisdale?
Thank you. I share your same concerns, Mr. McCrisky. On this particular project, I think we're in a good situation. This is, these are all associated with one particular project. It's the Route 138 improvements that's come before your board. Corridor improvements that were approved through your board in, in the past. It goes from Lincoln Street to, to Central Street. So it's very similar to like what the process they did through the Safe Roots to School project, where they had a lot of poles, they had to move them in. In order for that project to be complete by Mast DOT, the poles have to be removed. So we have that kind of control in place on this particular project, which we're lucky. So we have that kind of control in place on this particular project, which we're lucky. But for the other one-offs here and there, we, we, I don't know who that contact is through Verizon. So I, I don't know who-
So we're going to get, these will get done quickly by Verizon?
It's, it's all controlled through Mast DOT.
Okay, great. Thank you. That's, you answered my question. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gito.
Yes. When is this project going to begin?
The, the add date, I believe, was a month or two ago, so it'll be probably starting next year, next spring.
So we have time to, to deal with, with issues like Verizon's moving polls or not? Is, does Verizon put the polls in or does National Grid put the polls in?
I would have to refer to Mr. Himmatt on that question.
Um, National Grid, we install the polls, but we don't remove the polls. So all that installs us, all the removal is them.
So they install the polls, National Grid, and Verizon removes them.
That's remarkable. And that process, that, that work is going to begin basically in the springtime, did you say?
That's what I'm told. They've already been out the ad and bid. That's why they're kind of gearing up for the polls at this point.
I guess I'm wondering how, how we get a, sort of some leverage with, with the Verizon? Because they need to deal with the polls that are, that are associated with this project. And you say that, that that will happen because it's part of a, of a whole, whole big process. But we also have another couple of pages worth of, of double polls that Verizon is supposed to be working with, with us on, with the Fire Department. And I have no clue as to where those polls are, aside from the poll numbers, nor what the, what the timeframe is for, for that to work. Now, maybe I shouldn't be taking up time in this hearing to, to deal with that, because what you're saying to me is that, that this is all a straightforward process. But, but we've got to get those other polls dealt with. I mean, the Town Manager indicated that we could begin a process of collecting fines or fees for, for their not taking the, the polls out. I think we ought to have a pretty clear plan on, on that part of the process, because I know that, that, that Mr. Carrara and I believe others have been concerned about this for a long time. And we've, we've heard about the, the issue and, and heard that there was a solution, but we're not pulling the plug on that solution, and I think we'd better start doing that. So you can pass that along, and I will stop talking, and we can get on with the public hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Gito. Mr. McCrisky, did you have a comment?
Uh, just a comment. We have authority. Those people who've read the charter over and over and over, we have subpoena power. And if we have to subpoena Verizon, a public utility, to appear before this board in our role as street commissioners, I'd have Town Council start working on it. Or we can wait until they come for a poll relocation or something else that they apply for, and we can tell them we'll, we'll table their request until they answer our questions. So, you know, if somebody doesn't want to work with us, and we are the highest executive authority in this community with specific authority given to us under state statute and our own town charter, then we use those powers.
Do you want to make a motion to that?
No, I'd like to see if we can go through and let our department heads do their job first, and if they feel that they've exhausted all avenues, I would be the first to say, "Mr. Gito, will you second my motion?" But I'd like to see if our department heads can, to reach out to them, to let them know the tone of our meeting, let them watch our meeting, and I'm not going to sit there on behalf of the residents to put us into this spot and let Verizon decide when they're going to show up here. You know, they're not the ones in control. So, but I, I believe that our staff will be able to take my comments pretty effectively to Verizon, throw it up the flagpole, and let's see what happens.
Thank you, Mr. McCrisky. First, Mr. Carrara, and then Mr. Tisdale.
It's, it's real quick. I, I absolutely thank Lou for bringing it up again. I thank Joe for bringing up the fact that we do have that power. We could have tabled this until a representative came in, but I know this is something that is on the fire and they want to get it going, this 138 corridor, and I wasn't going to vote for any more of these, but I'm going to vote on this group because it's, it's a state thing and they'll probably do the right stuff. But it seems like the side streets, it's, there's married polls everywhere, and, and I'll, I'll yield to Joe and Lou that if it doesn't happen and we want to do something, we'll do something stronger. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Tisdale.
Yeah. I do believe, and this, this is, I've seen a report on this from the Fire Department, from Jack Maycomber, that Town Manager delegated that task of actually collecting a report and actually how many polls we have. I believe something like 80. Don't quote me on that. And he's in phase one of his data collection. We all know Jack pretty well. He's a little pit bull sometimes, so I, I think we have a pretty good person on this, and I think you'll see results very soon.
Happy to hear that. Okay. Motion, oh, sorry, citizens' comments? Yes, Mrs. Walsh.
Are we just doing C or are we doing, have we lumped some of these together or?
When we open the public hearing is for, for all of them.
C through J?
Correct. That was, what was, the, the public hearing was advertised as that full project, and when we opened the public hearing, it was, it was for everything related to that project.
Okay, well, that goes to G. H, I, and J don't seem to be related, although the agenda doesn't list any location. They have different project numbers. So are you just doing 30, 30, 45, 40?
Correct.
Okay, so that's going to leave us with H, I, and J eventually. In the future, it would be helpful to someone like me if H, I, and J had at least a street location. I don't have any objection. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Walsh. Any other citizens' comments?
Motion to close the public-
No, no, well-
Go ahead, Mr. Gito.
We have, we have a separate hearing on C, D, E, F, and G. They have different polls, and unless, I mean, I, I don't know how, how to proceed on that. I'm just, I'm just saying that if, if you've got, if you can say to me in, in English that, that, that we have covered all of the polls with, with our hearing, then, then that's fine, but I see, I see five or six-
What, what is on the agenda is not what was advertised. What was advertised was the project, the first one, and it says that that public hearing covering all of those polls, which Ms. Walsh is correct, C through G, will be, will be heard at 8 o'clock.
Thank you.
And then the next one says at 8:40, we're going to hear HJ and, H, I, and J. And the, and the project number is, is, is different. I did not catch that. I thought they were all the one project, and that's 307. So project 307, 82920 is supposed to start at 8:40, and that covers H, I, and J.
Well, I, uh, project number ends in 39, uh, 3079, and J project ends in 6524. So would it be safe just to read them all?
To read one off?
The, the H, J, I'm sorry, H, I, and J.
Sure, one second.
Since they have different project numbers.
Eight.
Let's, let's, what would be simple?
Yeah, one second.
Project 30304540 is Washington Street, 30304540 York Street, 30304540 Lincoln Street, and so forth and so on.
Yeah, so the, uh, the public hearing we're currently in is for project 30304540, and so that's the, that's the project under which we've opened the public hearing, and there was a motion to close that public hearing. So we can close that one, and then we'll, and then we'll open the next public hearing. So the motion to close was second-
Did you hear that, Mr. Gito? Did you hear that?
So we're, we have above four or five public hearings still.
Yes.
That's what I-
C, D, E, F, and G.
Could I miss one? So we're going to open the next one?
Yes, we're going to close this one, uh, and then vote to accept or reject, and then we'll go to the next public hearing, the next project number.
Or we could open and close them all?
Last row.
Yeah, that'll be good.
Either way, because there's sort of a deliberative process.
What was that? We've only opened the public hearing for one, though. So we can open it for the second, but we're going to have two concurrent open public hearings that we're going to have to then.
You open five public hearings, close one, each one of them, and then have a vote for all five. Do that, or do it, whatever you want to do it. Doesn't make any difference to me, but we ought to just do-
But we did have a problem that, that was advertised for the second project wouldn't, wouldn't be heard until 8:40, which we've passed that time period, but we started talking about it before 8:40. So I think we need to close this one and then open up the next one.
Sounds good. Let's do it.
So was there a motion to close it?
Yes.
Motion to close-
Second.
-hearing on C, D, E, F, and G.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. Motion to approve?
Uh, so made.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I vote aye as well.
Aye.
Mr. Gito, are you all set too? Because we're only doing C, D, E, F, G, project number 30304540.
Yeah, they all, yep, yeah, they all have this one-
Yes, Mr. Gito.
Just trying to say if you went down each one of those items, they, each one of those public hearings from C-
Okay, the last three are?
... and G indicate that they-
Got it, okay. Thank you very much.
Each one of them has a different poll.
Okay.
So when we open one, it did not open them all, but if, I don't care.
So we've, we've moved past, the last public hearing could, could be heard at 8:50. So I'm going to open up the public hearing for the last three applications, all our three separate projects. Okay, so I'm going to read all three of these. First one, this is for, uh, let me do it my way. Project H. Yeah, project H. A public hearing will be held on, uh, will be held by the, sorry, Town of Stodden knows the public hearing. A public hearing will be held by the Select Board on Tuesday, November 7th, 2023, at 8:40 PM to consider the joint petition of National Grid and Verizon New England Incorporated, who are requesting permission to locate polls, wires, and fixtures, including the necessary sustaining and protecting fixtures as said companies may deem necessary along and across the following public way. Install two JO polls on Turnpike Street, remove two JO polls on Turnpike Street, beginning at a point approximately 400 feet north of the central line of the intersection of the Turnpike Street and Park Street. Petition requires, required for installation of new 50 dat, slash, H1, P135-5, Turnpike Street. Replace P135, Turnpike Street, four slash four, sorry, 40 slash four, or two, a 45 slash H1. Project number 30782920. The hearing will be conducted in the Great Hall, third floor Town Hall, 10 Pearl Street, Stodden, Massachusetts, and/or virtually and/or, and via Google meets, and may be broadcast via Stodden Media Access Television and live stream. Google meets, video link and telephone connection for public comment available by calling the Select Board at office at 781-341-1300, extension 9212, or email gparreira@stodden-ma.gov, per order of Deborah C. Roberts, Chair, Select Board. Next, project I. A public hearing will be held by the Select Board on Tuesday, November 7th, 2023, at 8:45 to consider the joint petition of National Grid and Verizon New England Incorporated, who are requesting permission to locate polls, wires, and fixtures, including the necessary sustaining and protecting fixtures as said companies may deem necessary along and across the following public way. Install three JO polls on Lincoln Street, remove two JO polls on Lincoln Street, beginning at the point approximately 50 feet east of the center line of the intersection of Lincoln Street and Raymond Road. Install new midspan poll, P37-50, Lincoln Street as 50 slash H1. Replace P37, Lincoln Street with 45 slash H1, and P38, Lincoln Street with 45 slash two, project number 30783079. The hearing will be conducted in the Great Hall, third floor Town Hall, 10 Pearl Street, Stodden, Massachusetts, and/or virtually and via Google meets, and may be broadcast via Stodden Media Access Television and live stream. Google meets, video link and telephone connection for public comment available by calling the Select Board office at 781-341-1300, extension 9212, or email to gparreira@stodden-ma.gov, per order of Deborah C. Roberts, Chair, Select Board. And finally, project J. A public hearing will be held by the Select Board on Tuesday, November 7th, 2023, at 8:50 PM to consider the joint petition of National Grid and Verizon New England Incorporated, who are requesting permission to locate polls, wires, and fixtures, including the necessary sustaining and protecting fixtures as said companies may deem necessary along and across the following public way. Install one JO poll at Campanelli Parkway, beginning at a point approximately 170 feet northwest of the central line of the intersection of Schuman Ave. Install 45- Install 45-class H1 pole between P11 and P12 Campanelli Parkway. A pole will be located on town property on the west side of Campanelli Parkway. The pole will be labeled 11-50. Project number 308-06524. The hearing will be conducted in the Great Hall, third floor Town Hall, 10 Pearl Street, Stodden, Massachusetts, and/or virtually, and via Google Meets, and may be broadcast via Stodden Media Access Television and Live Stream. Google Meets video link and telephone connection for public comment available by calling the Select Board Office at 781-341-1300, extension 9212, or email to gprera@stodden-ma.gov per order of Deborah C. Roberts Chair, Select Board. So I move that we open up a public hearing for Projects 307-82920, Project 307-83079, and Project 308-06524.
All in favor?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well.
Uh, yeah, so the second, the checklist, I just want to confirm that they're all the same, but, but for Project H, 138, DPW approved. The Fire Department, they approved. Once again, they request a timeline for the removal of old poles. Engineering approved, they had no comments. Police approved with the comment that police details are needed for traffic. For Project I, for the second project, 307-83079, DPW approves. Engineering approves and had no comments. Fire Department approved, requested a timeline for removal of old poles, and the police approved, mentioned that police details needed for traffic. Finally, Project 308-06524, Fire Department approved, requesting a timeline for the removal of old poles. Engineering approved with no comments. DPW approved, no comments. Police approved, and they say that police details needed for, for vehicular traffic. Okay.
You're from the owner? Representative, I'm sorry?
Yeah, so our representative again. Thank you for hanging in there, Mr. Hemet. I know that was probably, I think I had it worse, but, but you had to listen to it all, so thank you for your patience on that. Can you tell us a little bit about these three projects?
Yes. All new poles for these three projects are needed for new equipments, for reliability, and customer system improvement.
Reliability?
I'm sorry?
Can you repeat that? You said all are needed for liability and something else I didn't hear.
Customer system improvement.
Customer system improvement. Any questions from the, the board? Yes, Mr. Gito?
Mr. Tisdale? Was there anything in any of these three projects that were brought to your, your attention as to an issue?
No. Mr. Horstfall from Engineering reviewed it and approved it, so I have faith in him.
Okay, so there was, there's nothing unusual here that? Thank you.
I feel like you're, I feel like you think there's something unusual.
No, I'm not. I'm, look at, I'm trying to just get to the end of the road here. I know nothing about what is going on these poles. And it seems like there are different things going on, different poles. But there's nothing that I saw that was an issue, and I didn't know if there was something spectacular that was happening. And the answer to your, my question was no. So, thank you.
Any other questions from board members? If not, citizens, comments and questions? With that being none, I'll accept a motion to close the public hearing.
So made.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So all were approved. Mr. Hema.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. Before we adjourn from our meeting today, I wanted to revisit Consent Agenda Item 3B. That's the water connection application for John Stegno. We did not state what our next steps would be, and I would like it for Mr. Tisdale to have the application completed, and then we'll put it back on our agenda for consideration for approval at our next Select Board meeting, which is in two weeks. Will that work for everyone?
That works.
Okay, great. With that said, motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. Thank you, everyone, and see you next time. Have a nice evening. Bye-bye.